I call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the place of allegiance? Okay, roll call. Ms. Martinez?
Oh, um, Councilor V Hill?
Here.
All councilors presentate, present with Councilor Hensley previous, or she's absent tonight and her absence is unexcused.
Okay, thank you. In the next item, we have a agenda approval. Council Carson.
I move that we approve the agenda. I stated.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion? Okay, if not, we start voting.
Councilor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, citizen comments. Uh, this is the segment of the agenda to where uh those of you who've turned in comment cards, I will call your name and ask you to come up to the podium and speak into one of the microphones that are lit up. And we ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. Uh, there is a timer up there. If you're still talking at the three minute mark, I would politely ask you to uh end your comments at that particular time. The first person I have is Craig Randolph.
You hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Craig Roloff. I'm a veteran outreach coordinator with Valleywide Health. I'm here just to educate and pass word about program that I'm in charge of called the Staff Sergeant Fox Suicide Prevention Program. It is a veteran suicide prevention program that Valleywide got through a grant with the VA. My program is real quick and just is just because I'm here pretty much to help you guys help me spread the word. Um, it's, I have two parts. First part is eligibility to screening. I have to screen the veteran to make sure that they are actually a veteran according to what Congress has said a veteran is. And I have to be able to give them a what's called a Columbia. It's five questions. Each question ask, are they thinking about suicide? Have they thought about it ever at all? They have to be a veteran. They have to answer yes to at least one of those five questions to be eligible. I would like to point out, I'm asking that all veterans that we feel like may be benefit to this program still come to me and see me. I need the data that proves when I go back to the VA in a few years that we still have veterans that require mental health um counseling that may or may not be suicide risk. Um, the second part is at that point I then become essentially a resource guide to them. I can get them free mental health care through either the VA or a provider in our area, or if they are not willing to see either of those, I do have a list of providers that are willing to see them via telehealth from somewhere outside of our valley. The process is either they enroll with the VA through a VSO for you guys would be Bill Brown or another VSO in the county, um, or I am an accredited VA. Well, I'm a VSO in training, working on accreditation. Um, and I can get that taken care of as well. Um, or I can see them, just take them straight to the VA Alamosa clinic. Um, where we can enroll them in Veteran Health Administration benefits, which will pay for their their healthcare as well. Um, I'd be clear that they don't have to see the VA, but if they want it paid for uh through this program, I still have to enroll them um with the VA. Otherwise, I have resources that are completely free. That again, we'll see them. They're just outside of this valley currently. Um, and that's the quick and gist. If there's any questions, I did bring flyers. If anybody's interested, it has my contact information on it.
Okay, well, thank you, Craig. We really appreciate that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next comment I have is from Sharon Harwood. You can come up to the podium.
Good evening.
Evening.
Um, my subject is on panhandling and the homeless. It's getting out of control, the panhandling safety. Um, my son works at City Market. He has special needs. He's a courtesy clerk. Um, he's always concentrating on the customer, making sure they're safe, that they're not harassed. If you're ever there and it's raining, he has the umbrella to walk you to your car. Do you know who I'm talking? So he's very respectful, but I got a call from him. Not last night, the night before. Um, get down here now, down to City Market. And one of the, he's kind of like the head ring guy. Uh, I think they call him, his name is Sean Finley, but they call him um homeless Jesus. He threatened my son to beat him up, ruin his car, kill him because he said that my son was trying to run him over, run his girlfriend over. Uh, needless to say, that really rattled him. There has been an ongoing problem with them there. They defecate. Now, this is more the panhandlers and and the two don't always cross, homeless and panhandlers. Sometimes they do, but anyway, they defecate in the bathrooms, then they get it and smear it all over. And my son is one of them that has to clean it up. Uh, the safety is a major concern. I've even saw them where they sit at McDonald's and stuff. And it's like all these businesses here are hiring. You know, you'll find a job just like that. Their comment is, oh, we make a lot more money doing this. I've heard tourists talk about how surprised they are, the number of panhandlers throughout the valley. So it's not good for business. Um, on the train back to safety, I worked on the passenger train for over five years. And when we would go to clean the trains up for the season or rails and ales, et cetera, there'd be needles in there, all kinds of trash, health issues. So I don't know, you know, as far as panhandling, something to do, maybe ticket it, make them, make it a law. You can't do it in X amount of dollars. They'll have to give up the money that they pocketed. Um, it's just, it's really getting bad out there. So just wanted to bring that to the forefront. And it seems too that it's, I've heard out on the streets and everything. Alamosa is the place to come if you're, you're, you don't have a place to stay. They take good care of them. Sorry.
All right, thank you.
But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I'm gonna turn it back over to uh turn it back over to our uh city manager and uh city attorney for any follow up.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, you know homelessness is a challenging issue and and there are definitely certain behaviors that create a significant nuisance for our community, for visitors, for businesses. Um, and I know from a city perspective, we're trying to come at this from every, every angle that we can from a a perspective of how can we minimize nuisance behavior? Um, and then also, how can we provide the resources for those um who are are working to get out of homelessness as well that um, you know, so there's, there's a lot of ways of looking at it. I know when I first began with the city in 2013, we used to have signs up that said no loitering. Um, and with different court cases and changes to the law, those were not legally um enforceable any longer to the frustration of of our law enforcement. So we ended up taking the signs down because it creates this this frustration with the public of you've got these signs posted saying no loitering, but then you're not ticketing, you're not enforcing it. And it's so we took the signs, we took the signs down. The problem is from a loitering perspective is if they are on public right of way and if they are not creating an immediate safety issue, which is almost defined like if you're standing in the middle of the street or something like that. There's nothing we can do from a ticketing perspective. Now, the interaction that was described up here um could cross over into some other issues that I think is important to connect with our police department. Um, because when you start talking about threats and and aggressive behavior and things like that, that's obviously not a protected speech that can be done in our right of way, which is what the panhandling is type of situation. So um, i- it's important to know these details, to know where we might be able to come at it to try to help and and alleviate specific situations. But it's a good opportunity to explain where the city's hands are tied as well from a situation. When it comes to private property, so if if individuals are on McDonald's property, if they're on City Market property, those entities can trespass individuals off of their property. But I always want to be clear, that's not a, that's not a silver bullet because what we see with our law enforcement is um, you know, an individual be trespassed off of Walgreens and we'll move them along. And they move along to somewhere else. Um, and then they're probably back at Walgreens again the next day. So it's an extremely frustrating situation and it's, it's one where from a conversation perspective, we have to acknowledge the nuisance that some of this creates. We have to be aware of some of the areas that the city's hands are tied. Um, but it's also areas where we're hopeful with both our lead program um and our co-responder program that some of these areas can get put onto a path where there's resources to help change the behavior as well and and those types of things. And so I would just say for you and anyone else that's listening, any type there, that if there's aggressive threatening type of behavior to to not hesitate to contact the police department um to see if we've crossed into areas there. And and just we're trying every other, which way we know to try to alleviate the homelessness. We, we do know that some are not from here. Why they, they would come here is um, it it's hard to know. It's, there's a limited stay at the shelter. There, there is meals. But we have very cold winters, so it's, it's hard to know what might bring someone to Alamosa. But we also know that some of our own residents are homeless as well. And so that's why we work to try to figure out what can we do to help? And just not doing anything isn't going to solve anything. And so council's been very focused on trying to figure out ways to come at homelessness without serving as an attraction to try to that would actually attract people here at the same time. And it's an extremely, extremely hard balance, but um if you want, I can give you my card and we could talk more because we could talk hours on this if you want. But my biggest um recommendation is to definitely connect with the police about any threatening or aggressive. Okay, so they were called and a report. Okay. Okay. That probably is. And then here's my card. If you want to talk more from a homeless perspective on what we can do and not do, we don't have all the answers.
Panhandling is
We, that's
We, we actually used to have such a law uh on the ordinances and we had to remove it because it is a violation of First Amendment rights according to the US Supreme Court.
So Mayor, that's all I have at at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item um on the agenda ceremonial items. Uh, we have a proclamation and as council we are sharing reading proclamations and uh tonight, our proclamation for National Deflection Day is going to be read by Mayor Pro Tim Grego.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The City of Alamosa proclamation, National Deflect, Deflection Week, July sixteenth through the twenty-third. The National Deflection Day is July nineteenth, twenty twenty-third. Whereas the deflection is what, when first responders, social workers, recovery support professionals, connect individuals experiencing mental or substance, substance use challenged to community-based treatment and or services as an alternative to arrest or take no action at all. And whereas the police treatment and community collaborative is the national voice of deflection. And whereas the National Leadership Council, Operation to Save Lives and O R T National Work this year to identify one week within the year to highlight deflection efforts across the country. And whereas the first ever National Day of Deflection will highlight the impacts of deflection work in the community nationwide and on the importance of local and multi-state partnerships. And whereas the National Day of Deflection is scheduled for the twenty-four hours that make up Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. And whereas deflection teams and sites in communities in eleven states, Ohio, Kentucky, Arizona, Florida, New Jersey, Massachusetts, Colorado, Michigan, Connecticut, West Virginia, Win- and Wisconsin are expected to participate. And whereas the City of Alamosa, Alamosa Police Department, the Center for Restorative Programs collaborate with our county, community, regional, state and federal partners to provide a restorative community-based deflection diversion approach with the goals of improving public safety and pub, public order and reducing unnecessary justice systems involved of people participating in this program. Now, therefore, we had resolved Ty Coleman, the mayor of the City of Alamosa, and on behalf of the entire council proclaimed July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three as National Deflection Day. And July sixteen through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-three as National Deflection Week in the City of Alamosa and encourage all citizens to learn about the benefits deflected, deflection work has on the community.
If we have anyone in the audience who want to come up and say a few words about the proclamation, uh before we come down and take a picture with everyone. Thank you, Council Grego.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. Thank you. Um, so this is the first ever, as you heard, National Deflection Week in the um in the nation. And they wanted to recognize communities who were doing diversion and deflection work, just to highlight the importance of this. And it is a collaboration. So it takes all of us as a community and our partners working together to address a lot of the issues that we see in our communities that are struggling with substance use and mental health issues. So um, it is a lot of work. Um, it is hard work. And so being able to recognize this for us as a community and the hard work that we do as a team and as an organization with our partners as well as is an honor um to be asked as a community to participate in this. And this is the first year. Um, so we're hoping other communities will hear about this and want to learn more and join, join the movement. So, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to come down and take a picture with you um with Councilor Grego giving you the proclamation. Thank you, Council. Up next on the agenda, we have a presentation uh from an outside agency, a lead update.
Did we want to do consent calendar?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You can stay there.
Yeah, you can stay.
You can stay there, but.
Yeah, I got a little ahead of myself here. All right, we have consent calendar A, Councilor Daniel.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, start voting, please.
Councilor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, now we have um the presentation from our outside agency. Okay.
Hello, um, so again, in recognition of National Deflection Week, um, I do have some appreciations that I would like to give out during our update. First is for Heather in the City of Alamosa. Um, appreciation presented to the City of Alamosa and deep gratitude for your significant contributions. Your efforts have made a difference to our organization and thank you for all you do. Um, we couldn't do this without the support of Heather. She's very open-minded and supportive and um again, she's the reason why we're here. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Awesome.
And as we all know, when we first started this line of work, um, it was a different way of doing things in our community. And so having the buy-in and support from especially our law enforcement was a big deal for us. And so again, um, I do want to acknowledge and um appreciate Chief Anderson um and all the support he has provided to us. I know in the very beginning, he was very honest about, I'm not sure this is going to work, but I'm going to be open-minded to it. Um, he was the first officer to make referral to our program. And since then, it's just, you know, I've really appreciated the growth and open-mindedness he's always kept when it came to the work that we do. And so I do want to say that we do appreciate you and wanted to acknowledge you and thank you for that.
Awesome. Good job, good job.
Um, I know we have a lot of work ahead of us. I mean, this is a, a big issue for a lot of communities and um I couldn't do this without also my team. And so I did ask them to come. We're growing and expanding, which is good. Um, to be able to be able to do that is a great opportunity, but um also having the support of all of our partners. I had to have an event today for our National Deflection Day and it was kind of a last minute. But anytime I call my partners, I'm like, are you guys willing to come help out and support us and show up and do something? They're always there. Um, so we did have some partners in our park today who showed up and we were trying to just distribute information about what our work is and what we do so we can educate them. And then we also handed out a lot of materials. So we were handing out some, you know, hygiene kits and water and, you know, just asking people to stop by and hear what our, our program does. But then also the resources that are available in our community, because oftentimes I think when people hear about being rural and being small, they're like, oh, there's not a whole lot here, but we actually as a Sandless Valley, we have a lot of resources here. Um, and our partners are really great at working together to try to help figure out what we need to do to meet the challenges that we're faced with every day when we're working with this population. And so I just want to say I'm forever grateful for my partners and from the support from the City of Alamosa, the chief um and my team for being who they are and doing what you do. So thank you and thank you for the proclamation and for allowing us time to always give our updates.
Thank you, thank you.
So I didn't have anything. Actually, I just came up to support the program. That's really why I was just standing here. So thank you all from CRP for the recognition. I'm sure the guys will appreciate that at the police department um as well as myself. Um, you know, program continues to move along. We, we work side by side with them, just as always. Uh, coresponders are making a lot of referrals. I think we're up to fourteen just with one co-responder right now. So it's doing good. It's really all I got.
Awesome, awesome. So and any comments from council or anything before I wrap it up? Okay, Councilor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. As always, I'm super impressed with the team. Um, you all do amazing, amazing work for our community and amazing work for your participants. And I think the partnerships that you have are a testament to the way we care about our community. And so I really am grateful for the work that you're doing and I appreciate that there's, there's a recognition about sometimes the collaboration fatigue. This was not an easy program to keep going during COVID. And it was not easy to get, get rolling and it was a tough, a tough thing. And so you all, the city, the city manager, the CRP staff, everyone has worked together to make sure that the people who need the services, the DA's office, the people who need the services the most get the services they need. Um, and I just really want to say how much I appreciate that. And you all are doing a really, really great job.
Thank you, Councilor Daniel. And um I'll wrap things up. I just want to thank you again. I always say that you all meet people where they are and that means a, a, a lot to a lot of people. Also want to thank you for the national presence that you all have to where people are recognizing what you all are doing, not only in our state, but across the country. Um, some of the things, in fact, the Attorney General was in town a couple of weeks ago and he brought up the collaboration efforts between PD and uh the lead program. So that was uh very good to hear. So just keep up the great work, working together as a team and we wish you much success.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, I just um also want to recognize Carrie and the, the CRP team. As we've been working to um, to, to help our officers better understand the program and and understand what's going on and and to know, you know, maybe they haven't made a referral, but how are the other referrals going type of situation? Um, Carrie and her team have put in a lot of elbow grease um on a spreadsheet to then we've added two columns. And so one column is, you know, major life accomplishments or something like that. And so we're not being specific on what they may have accomplished, but we feel it's important for officers to know that, hey, they are accomplishing something. So maybe it was they reunited with family or um they got a job or, or something like that. So something within the last ninety days, they can know if the, these individuals have made a major um positive life um step. Conversely, we also know it's not a straight line um that sometimes there are going to be straight setbacks. And so there's going to be another column that might capture that too. And that can also help the officer know that um, if the, if that individual's engaged in the community and then for some reason law enforcement's interacting, they might be more likely to know that, hey, they've had some setback. They don't know what the setback is. Um, but the, that could help a little bit more from an empathy perspective too. And so I'm really, I know it's a little extra work. Um, and, and it's going to be a little extra work to kind of keep that current. But I think from a, from a perspective of helping officers understand what's going on in the lives of people who've been referred into the program, I think it'll be very helpful. And so um I'm really excited about that as well. So.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Ms. Brooks. And thank you, um, Sarah P. and your team, Carrie. Thank you, everyone. All right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda under Public Works, first reading of ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty-three. Ms. James?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. So I'm here for ordinance number eleven, twenty twenty-three. It's approving an intergovernmental agreement with the county so that we may move forward with the levy engineering. So the, the only response to our RFP to begin our um certifying engineer process was um AECOM. And AECOM prefers to only contract with a single entity. And so because we are the ones that put out the RFP and because we are lead on the levy project, we went ahead and we signed the master services agreement with AECOM. But we still need to be able to split the costs and work collaboratively with the county to get our levy engineering completed. And so the commissioners have reviewed this document. They've agreed to move forward. And this is formalizing our agreement through an IGA, which has to be done by ordinance.
Okay, Council Daniel? I'm sorry, Council Carson.
I was going to make a motion.
Okay, okay.
Mayor, I, I move that we approve uh the first reading of ordinance number eleven dash twenty twenty-three and set it for a public hearing on August second, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock.
and set it for a public hearing on August second, twenty twenty-three at seven o'clock or as soon thereafter as it can be heard.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not, please start voting.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item. City Manager Legal Resolution Number Twelve, Twenty Twenty Three, Resolution Amending the composition of the City of Alamosa Main Street Advisory Committee.
Mayor, I think you're looking at the paper that we had yesterday and not the agenda online. Because it should be resolution number twelve next.
Okay.
Oh, okay, sounds good.
Okay, all right. So we're resolution number twelve, twenty-three.
Sorry, you just can't get rid of me.
It's okay.
So this is in response to us setting the Colorado Creative District Committee, Creative District Committee resolution at our last city council meeting. And I was recommended by a council member that we have cross-pollination between the Main Street Committee and the Creative District Committee. And so this formally amends the composition of our Main Street Committee so that it includes a member of the, the new newly created Creative District. So there'll be a permanent member from either board, serving on either board. So they can make sure they're communicating and we achieve our Creative District and they're collaboratively working together. So that is what I'm presenting this evening.
Okay, Counselor Grego Carson?
Never.
Okay.
I was going to make a motion. There's no further questions. I'll make a motion and we pass resolution number twelve dash twenty twenty-three.
Counselor Carson?
I'll second it.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Counselor V Hill, go ahead.
Just real quick, want to acknowledge Counselor Daniel. And that was just a great idea for doing that. So thank you, Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Please start voting. Are we missing one here? There you go, thank you. All right, Ms. Martinez?
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to the next item, City Manager Legal Version. First reading of ordinance number thirteen, Twenty Twenty Three, and ordinance designating site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems and major extensions of existing domestic water systems and municipal and industrial water projects as activities of state interest.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, as you know, there has been renewed interest, especially on the part of Renewable Water Resources, RWR, in firing up plans to export groundwater out of the San Luis Valley that were AWDI and Stockman's Water, and now we have the RWR version. The valley always comes together to, has historically anyway, always come together to address those threats of water export. And I think we have been discussing with council for a while now, the COG, the Council of Governments, efforts to bring the valley together in a common shared vision for what are known as ten forty-one regulations. Ten forty-one regulations are a carve-out in state law that specifically provide the ability for local governments to regulate areas and activities that have a statewide impact, but also affect those local governments. And the statute that provides for establishing ten forty-one regulations calls out a number of areas in which local governments can regulate under those kinds of regulations. One of which, or two of which actually are ones that the, the team that has been working with COG proposes that local governments valley-wide designate as areas of state interest and come up with ten forty-one regulations to regulate. So those two are site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems and major extensions of existing domestic water systems and efficient, efficient utilization of municipal and, and industrial water projects. A lot of words, but in the context of what is hoping to be accomplished in the valley, that would allow municipalities and counties to develop a consistent set of regulations that would govern the ability to develop and move water out of the valley. And so the, the COG has engaged Sullivan Green CV, a law firm out of Denver to do a couple of things. Because when we're trying to put these regulations together, and by we, I mean anyone who's trying to do it. So the City of Alamosa, other municipalities in the valley, you need to develop or you need to designate what your areas and activities of state interest are. And you need to develop regulations that govern those activities in those kinds of contexts. In, in the valley, where we're, where the COG is really spearheading this notion to come up with consistent regulations across the six valley counties and with all the municipalities within them. If that's going to happen, you will also need an intergovernmental agreement between and amongst those local governmental entities about how their regulations are going to look, how they're going to be administered. And this, what's before you today, so those are three kind of areas, three, three things that need to be addressed. What's before you today is the designation of areas and activities of state interest. So the area of, of state interest is the, the valley, the six counties of the valley. The activities are those two that we just talked about, designed primarily to address threats of exportation of water, both surfaced and groundwater out of the valley. That is, those two are being proposed to every single local government within the valley to adopt. Some already have done that. That's in front of you now. At a future time, in fact, scheduled for the August second meeting will be the first reading of the intergovernmental agreement on how the, the entities are all going to work together to try to accomplish this in a cohesive way. And then that will come on for final hearing on August sixteenth, which is the same meeting that this ordinance will be scheduled for final hearing. So this doesn't appear on your next meeting as it usually does. It skips a meeting because we have to do thirty days published notice when you're designating areas and activities of state interest. So that was a lot of words. Tried to clarify the process. Let me know if you have any questions.
Okay, it looks like we have Counselor Daniel.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Eric. That, that was very helpful. So I appreciate that. So right now, we as a city alone can't do anything about this. So we have to do this ten forty-one, sorry, is that the right number, rule? In order for it, in order for us to have the power to make these changes, is that correct?
Well, not entirely. So yes, we right now have no ordinances that govern anything like that. And in order to get some that would govern activities for dealing with things that are going to be of state interest, in other words, taking water from us outside of our boundaries over to the front range, for instance, we would have to do some ten forty-one regulations. We don't have to do them as part of this process in conjunction with the entire valley. We could do them on our own. But that wouldn't get us much because who's going to come within the city limits of the City of Alamosa to develop a water project? It's unlikely. And, and part of the reason that COG wants to spearhead this as a joint effort is the realization that no matter where somebody comes in to develop a water project, that's going to affect everybody. And really, it's, it's trying to make a forum, and this is the intergovernmental agreement part. It's trying to make a forum where, wherever this might happen, it's easy and in fact, necessary to take account of the effects valley-wide, not just in that immediate locality. But we could do it on our own.
Okay, so then it may, because I was looking at the other things that are in number three, like the, like disposal sites, airports, rapid and mass transit. So it may not, like, we could add those later on our own without impacting this with the other counties and communities or anything like that, right? If we wanted to add such things.
That's correct. We could do our own ten forty-one regulations on a different topic, completely separate and aside from what's happening with this effort.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego?
Well, comment I get, I got is the awareness this is bringing out. Because in the past, it seems like it's always been like the farmer that's fighting part of this, but it's all of us. And it's supposed to be the municipalities that are aware of how important this water is and, and the fight that we continue to fight. When somebody just decides to come and try to take our water and just the awareness and, and, and teaching to the public. You know, just to flush your toilet, that doesn't mean you're going to just flush the toilet. That water's come from somewhere. So the awareness is so important and I think I'm glad that somebody's, you know, organizing this and, and pushing it and getting that communication out there. So.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want, you're right, it's a lot of words. But I do want to, from what I'm looking at, I just want to reiterate to everyone who's listening, there is no cost to the city to undergo this now or, or in the future. This is something that's an outside entity is coming in and, and helping us pull together.
Well, yes, there will be some costs in the future. Once we have adopted our ten forty-one regulations, if we were to get an application, we would have administrative costs administering that application and dealing with it. Again, I think it unlikely that we would get an application, but if we did, we would have those kinds of costs in implementing the regulations. But the development of the regulations, the drafting of the regulations, the drafting of, of the IGA, there was a template ordinance that was drafted by the group from which I worked to develop this ordinance as well. That's all being paid for by the COG.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Krebs. Counselor Grego?
If there's no further comments, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we pass on first reading, ordinance number thirteen dash twenty twenty-three and set it for a public, August the second, seven o'clock soon after.
August the sixteenth.
Sixteenth, okay. Seven o'clock or soon thereafter.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second and further discussion? Okay, if not, please start voting.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, all right, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Alrighty.
I do, Mayor.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor V Hill.
A quick one, I went to the Habitat for Humanity meeting. And good news, they're about, a family's about to close on a house and it's going to be theirs. A lot of hard work went into getting that done and they're about to start a new house pending some final paperwork and deadlines and that kind of stuff. And then also wanted to put it on your radar, council, is they have asked us and they're going to send out further details and exact dates and times, but like a city council workday, if you would like to volunteer on a Saturday in September to go help and build a Habitat for Humanity House here in Alamosa. So we will get to the specific dates and times on that, but we're thinking like the second or third Saturday of September. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor V Hill. Okay. We don't have any other committee reports. Let's go to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. We actually do not have any staff announcements.
Wow, that's a first. All right, good deal. Okay, that brings us up to Local Liquor Licensing Authority Action. Ms. Martinez?
Okay, so this is a request for the waiver of our local late fee for the liquor license renewal for Society Hall Foundation. So their license expired on June sixteenth of this year. Their renewals, renewals were previously handled by Pete McGee, who passed away. So during that time that the paperwork would have been received, that was when he passed away and then that left the other board members to try and find that paperwork and get it in. I didn't receive that renewal prior to the expiration date. And per the liquor code, I cannot, we can't do anything related to the late fee for the state. So they have to pay that no matter what. But there's nothing that we found that doesn't allow them to like request a waiver for our local late fee. So that's what this is for. Per the code, it would be five hundred dollars of a late fee to the state and a five hundred dollar late fee to the city, unless you guys waive that late fee for us. So as the local liquor license authority, you guys can choose to do that. Previous to this year, they've always been consistent with their renewals and have never had this happen before.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Counselor Daniel?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say that Pete was such a, like a pillar in our community. He did so many things for our community and I, I can't imagine the ongoing impacts of his loss, and this is only one small piece. And I think because of his work with the city, work in Society Hall, work with every, you know, community thing that he was on and recognizing that Society Hall is still trying to probably fill many, many of those gaps that he left. I think it would be appropriate to waive this fee, but I just wanted to throw that out for council discussion.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Carson?
I was just going to say, I agree a hundred percent with, with Counselor Daniels because he was, and you know, everybody's feeling the impacts literally every day. Even at my job, we feel it. So yeah, I'm, I'm game. And as soon as the comments are done, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we waive that, that renewal fee.
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, please start voting.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to council comments. Counselor Daniel?
I just wanted to say, I have appreciated the growth that was recognized today in our lead program by, and, and growth has happened in our whole entire community in the time that we've had the lead program. But really Heather and the chief have made that work possible and continue to make it work. And I know Carrie and her team have really spent their, you know, professional development, working on this every single day. And this is only a piece of what you do. And so I just really want to say thank you for the energy and commitment you have and they, I know they value this partnership so much and it wouldn't be possible without it. So thank you for that. Also, speaking of fantastic teamwork, the audit results were amazing. So wonderful job with all of the changes that we've had and all of the, the things that need to happen. So really appreciate, I know that takes everyone's time, not just Leanne's time, not just Heather's time, but everyone has to participate in that audit and, and to do things throughout the year to make it smooth. So I, that was wonderful to see that hard work recognized by our auditors today. And then for those of you who don't know, the chamber put out the leader is going to run the leadership Alamosa again. And I, like, I hope, I wish I would have said this last, but I hope that people had put in applications for their organizations and things like that because it is going to be another fantastic training opportunity to develop our, the leaders we currently have and then people who want to take on more leadership roles. And so I'm really excited that the chamber is doing that. I just wanted to recognize that publicly.
Thank you, Counselor Daniel. Counselor Grego?
Okay, I wanted to say something that was taking me forty years to say. And that is, I'm not going to seek the, an eleventh term for city council. When you see a lot of projects like the wastewater treatment plant coming up thirty years, you, you know, you make those decisions thirty years ago and you never think you're going to be around to see the, now we have to redoing that. We're doing stuff on, on the wreck building, just a lot of stuff that's coming up and on. And, and I've struggled with it. I've had a lot of people wanting me to stay, you know? But I, I believe that we're leaving the city in, in, in the best way. The group of people that sit around this table are doing a tremendous job. And like I said, I'm, I'm going to, I'll put together something more formal that, you know? But I just, you know, in August, we're, we're starting to, we're going to have that deal. So it's only fair to let that out so people, whoever wants to come out and. So people, whoever wants to come out and, and participate with that, they can do that. So. But we'll put together, we'll put together something more formal and stuff. And like I said, Ward 3, you know, the constituency there has been, you know, my support and stuff. So I will not seek an 11th term. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Grego. Mayor Pro Tim Grego. I think you probably called all of us off guard tonight with you making that announcement right now at this moment, even though you've had conversations. And I know I speak on, on behalf of all the city council that we admire your dedication and commitment that you've had for the 40 years here. To do that is unimaginable now in today's time for you to represent your ward for so many years. And you've always been that leader who speaks up for your community and speaks up for what's right and fair. And we really appreciate the service that you provided. And just thank you. Thank you so very much. You're welcome. Okay, so I'll wrap things up since I don't see any other lights on. I just want to thank the city staff and the barbecue committee for the wonderful barbecue event and appreciation that we had and the council members who showed up. Councilor Krebs and Councilor Daniel, they had a good time giving those gifts away. And it was really fun seeing you all participate and seeing your families. That really means a lot to us to see your families when they show up to those events. You see them go from little kids to growing up, to young teenagers to adults. It just really means a lot. So keep up the great work, everybody. With that being said, this meeting is adjourned.